I'd like to call to order the special meeting for the Peters Township Planning Commission, February 22nd, 2024. May I have a roll call?
Chair Mills, Mr. Karthi Phyllis, and Mr. Salapis had all previously indicated to me that they would not be able to attend tonight. Mr. Magrina?
Here.
Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Ms. Corble?
Here.
Mr. Waldinger?
Here.
There are no minutes to approve today. Any public comment for items not on the agenda? Hearing none. Just a reminder to the audience, if you do have public comment, we're going to ask you to come up, state your name and address, as well as sign in, so we can accurately collect that data. There is no old business, that brings us to new business, which is the Woodbrier Estates Residential Development Preliminary Plan. As a reminder, this is a planning commission recommendation to council. Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Rocco. So, before you is the Woodbrier Estates Residential Development Preliminary Plan, and before we get into the plan itself, I'd kind of like to just provide some background as to where we have been and where we're going with this plan. The initial application for the plan before you was originally submitted to the township on May 12th, 2022. At that time, this lot was zoned Conservation Residential Overlay Zoning District, and that will be the governing regulations as to what, as to the way we're going to review this plan. At the time when the plan was originally submitted, it consisted of 83 single-family homes. These homes were situated on lots that were approximately quarter acre in size. Since that time, staff and the applicant have met numerous times regarding a number of issues, and through those meetings, what we have come about is a new submission that you see before you, and that's the one with the 52 single-family homes, with each of those lots measuring anywhere from a third to a quarter acre in size. So in terms of the site itself, for those who aren't familiar with the site or the location, this development is located roughly 500 feet east of the intersection with Bauerhill Road and Venetia Road. The surrounding uses are predominantly single-family homes. The adjoining zoning around the property itself is also low-density residential. And of course, the size is 35 acres, but it's actually split into two different portions. You have a four-acre portion to the south on the other side of Venetia Road, and on the northern side of Venetia Road, you have approximately 30 acres of land. Additionally, in terms of some of the existing features you see on the site, as it stands now, it is a, well, was a former agricultural property. It consists of a single-family home, a number of accessory structures. Some of the natural features on-site include some moderate slopes. The slopes generally rise up from Venetia Road up towards the beltway to the north, which I believe is Sienna Woods. There are some streams either adjoining the property or just to the east of the property. Actually, I can point them out to you here. We have a drainage way running along the eastern portion here that flows into Peters Creek, which is just outside the property boundaries here. And of course, with Peters Creek, that comes with some floodplain and floodway, which is denoted on this existing conditions plan, in red being the boundary for the floodway. And this blue line, which is kind of hard to see, that is the delineation for the floodplain. So in terms of the proposed development, what you're seeing before you is a project for single-family homes. There will be 52 single-family lots being proposed. These lots now range from a size of one-third of an acre all the way up to almost half an acre. The site consists of three new proposed roads and the extension of one existing road. There will be two points of ingress. You have to the north here, access into an existing subdivision to the north of, we that's Sienna Woods, that will be continuation of the road, Wildbrier Drive, into the development. And the main point of entrance will be Venetia Road and this road here. Each of the roads, including the extension of the existing road, will include a 42-foot right-of-way. That right-of-way will include a 20-foot cartway consisting of two 10-foot driving lanes, as well as two-foot wedge curves and a five-foot sidewalk adjacent to the street itself on both sides. The proposed development also consists of two stormwater ponds. They are located on the eastern side and southern side of the site. Here is pond number one and pond number two. Those will be handling the stormwater for the site itself as well, and will ultimately drain into Peters Creek. And the other thing that you note with this development is that, for the most part, it avoids many of the natural features that are sensitive on the site itself. So in terms of recommendation, first off, there's still some outstanding issues, most of them you can see in the comment letters that we provided from Gateway, from TPD, as well as myself. Many of these concerns are technical in nature. Some of the more prominent concerns include coordinating traffic calming requirements with the township. There's also a suggestion of treating the Wildbrier extension into the development, treating that road with some additional traffic calming methods. There is also, we also need to provide the open space calculations on the plans, which I have talked to the developer, that is on the plans itself. They provide 30% of the space as being open space. Also, possibly asked, we're looking to see some additional consideration for parking and/or lighting of the existing auxiliary parking lots. Right now, they do meet the minimum requirements for the number of parking, however, given the fact that, you know, anytime there's any type of special event in the subdivision, people more than likely end up parking on the street. We'd like to try and avoid that as much as possible through the provision of some extra parking spaces, parking spaces, sorry. So with that said, staff is recommending consideration of this plan to be tabled until those conditions and comments can be addressed, and this would then allow for the applicant time to respond to our comments and then provide some revised plans to you guys.
Understood.
Just to note, the applicant is here in the front row, and I know they have some items that they would also like to discuss.
Do you have any good notes, sir? Would you mind coming up?
Sure. Good evening. John Schleicher with JMS Engineering. Also with me tonight is Brian Devine, our attorney, and Jim Cairns is our traffic engineer, in case there's any questions in that regard. I don't have a whole lot to add unless, I did prepare a brief presentation, if you'd like me to kind of take you and the audience through the proposal in a little bit more detail.
Would you like me to bring up your slides?
Yeah, if you could pull up the Google Earth image, that way we can pan in and out if as necessary. So we prepared an overlay on Google Earth, which I think gives a good perspective of the development in relationship to the surrounding community. So hopefully, as you can see from here, and based on just numbers and density and things like that, and the proposed product, the actual home building, is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. It's going to be high-end residential development. There are, as Mr. Holdren indicated, one-third acre minimum lot size and 30, just about 31% open space. Under this density option, the required open space is 25%. So we've not only increased the lot sizes to minimum one-third acre, but we've, you know, increased the open space to actually coincide with the, you know, the higher density option, although we're well within the lowest density option in this zoning district.
Mr. Schleicher, what's the minimum lot size?
One-third of an acre. Yes, sir. And I mentioned, you know, high-end for this development, they are all going to have, and this kind of lends itself to some of the parking questions and discussion, there'll all be three-car garages with at least three parking spaces in the driveways. And then, in addition, and I can get into a little bit more detail on the guest parking, there is the one guest parking space per five dwelling units per code, and we had a discussion with staff today to increase that as much as reasonable and feasible without, you know, creating just a massive, you know, parking area. We do have small parking pockets throughout the development, so that they're accessible from each lot as well.
So six total, six total spaces per home, three inside, three outside?
Exactly. Minimum.
Minimum.
Yes.
That's without, I assume, double parking on the driveway, like one behind, that's three across and three inside? Or is that?
Yeah, I couldn't say for sure to that, because there will be side entrance garages, so the garage, the driveway apron itself, kind of a single, a single lane, and then with the turntable.
Okay.
It can accommodate, it can accommodate at least three more. As Mr. Holdren mentioned, we do have the natural sources or resources, as well as the perimeter buffer are located in permanent open space. So there is a 25-foot buffer setback around the perimeter, but that's not necessarily required to be open space, but we felt it was good practice to include that as open space. That way, it's more straightforward, buffer, undisturbed, you know, wooded area. And it also contains some of the, you know, more sensitive natural features. There is a stream along the eastern portion of the property. There's a small tributary that flows down along the western boundary of the property as well.
Hi, John.
Yes, sir.
You're familiar with this?
Yes.
Would it be fair to say that the green is the open space?
Exactly.
And is this being counted down below, that's away from the homes, as open space?
It is counted toward the 31%, yes.
It's a separate lot?
It's a, it's a, it's a separate part.
We call it the southern section on our description?
Correct. Correct.
So if you take away that southern section, what would the percentage be for the northern section of open space?
I could confirm that for you, I'm going to...
I can, I have a decent guess, it's around 20%.
Right.
It's about 4.6 acres, that southern lot.
Correct.
And then, the stormwater is included within that open space calculation?
Yes, sir. Within that particular open space calculation, but if you subtract out the stormwater facilities from that, we're still in the neighborhood of 30%, 29%.
And John, all that acreage will be de-developed to the HOA?
Correct.
So it can't be developed in the future?
That's correct. Permanent, undevelopable open space.
So the area on the other side of the street is just an empty, is just empty?
Yes. It'll remain vacant, with the exception of our stormwater facility and maintenance associated with that.
And that's perfectly okay with the township to have an open space that's across the street from the homes?
Yes. That meets our regulations.
Is the development, it's sidewalked?
Yes.
Okay. And is it sidewalked all the way down to the, to Venetia, or only within the, only where the houses, does it end with the houses then?
Down to Venetia, and I believe along Venetia.
Along the, I have the plans, yeah, I believe. While he's looking that up, the driveways, the distance from the sidewalk to the garage, is that supposedly, or going to be big enough to hold a garage maybe, steadily cab, or?
It'll be about 25 feet, I guess.
25 feet? Can you give that to me, garage?
If you would like to make comments, we'll have audience comments on the server.
And that would not include the turntable for the driveway, that's just the driveway part of the driveway.
So if you're, if you're up against the garage door, and then you, and then the sidewalk case, that's 25 feet between those two touchpoints?
Well, again, these are going to be side entrance garages.
All of them?
Right.
Okay. So nothing is going into a sidewalk? There's no?
There's no garage, no garages will face the road on the front of the house. If you can go back to the housing, the building elevations. As you can see in the bottom left building elevation, the garage is a two-car side entrance garage with what we call bolt-on, which would be the third garage door, be straight back. So that garage door would face the street, but it would be about 50 feet, more than 50 feet from the road.
And is that the same with the top middle one as well?
Correct. Yes.
But the other garage doors are facing our side entrance ones?
Correct.
Okay. So there isn't a scenario here where cars are backed up, where normal outdoor cars are backed into a sidewalk in order to park, with one outdoor car?
Correct. Well, we do have a minimum front setback of, I believe it's 25 feet, either 20 or 25 feet, which...
It's 25, yeah.
It's 25. That gives you enough room for a car in front of the garage.
Were there any variances requested in connection with this development at all?
No.
No. And just to kind of jump back to the open space question, and the, that does include the parcel on the south side of Venetia Road, the development that originally was before you, not the 83-lot development, but our original proposal with 52 lots, we had more open space on the northern parcel. And in just discussing with the developer and with the township, and kind of working through the end use here, the product, it was kind of collectively decided that a larger lot area would be desirable to, again, just be consistent with more of the surrounding community, as well as allow for a larger building footprint, which is a required ratio, you're like 30% building coverage on a, on a given lot. So a third of an acre, we'll call it 14,000 square feet times 30%, you're looking at, you know, 4,000 to 5,000 square foot building footprint, which allows that, you know, that larger, that larger product. So with that, we did have initially the 25% minimum required open space on the northern parcel, independent of the southern parcel, but we were still providing that southern parcel as open space. That was above and beyond the minimum requirement. So as a, you know, just kind of a, you know, a compromise in being able to expand the, you know, the individual lot sizes, we incorporated that, you know, that southern parcel to get us above and beyond that 25% minimum.
So I think what you're saying is that rather than the, if the minimum lot size for the ordinance that we have in Peters Township, it could have been smaller, you incorporate, you put more into the lot size, so each lot size is now 33 to .43, rather than, let's say, .25 to .33, you put it in the ownership of whoever buys those homes, rather than the open space?
Exactly. Exactly.
And that was coupled with some comments from the township, that the township desired less homes on bigger lots, so bigger they made the lots, the less homes they could build, so that was what the township was seeking.
Now, the understanding is the open space is owned by the township instead?
It'll be, it'll be the HOA that owns the open space.
Correct.
And then they're required to maintain that space, that's the vacant space that's across the street as well?
Yes, they're going to have to.
Is there any plans to improve that open space across the street with any, I don't know, park benches or planning, or is it just left the way it is right now?
It's going to be left as, you know, more passive open space. We did have discussions with the township, and there are no sort of pedestrian amenities on either side of that property. There's, you know, we wouldn't want to encourage people to cross Venetia Road to access it, so it's just more of a, again, just a open green space.
Can we see the one that gives the overview of these along with the other neighborhoods around it?
Something like this?
Yes, please, thank you. And will the sidewalks between the two developments, the Wild and the Wildbrier, will those then connect? Will the sidewalks then eventually connect?
They could be. We don't control the Wild, the Wildbrier side.
So you'll have sidewalks going all the way to the end of, your sidewalks will reach to the end of whatever you're connecting?
Yes.
Do we know whether there's any provisions in the HOA for the connector neighborhood that would either require or would allow them to extend sidewalks, or will there be a gap there, unless somebody affirmatively decides to do something within the township? I mean, within the HOA. Do you see where I'm talking about, with the cul-de-sac?
Existing HOA?
Yep. And you see where it ends in the cul-de-sac?
Cristiano Woods, you're talking about?
Yeah. Do you see where that's going to connect now, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure if they have sidewalks.
Yeah.
There are none.
No sidewalks there, okay. I'm going to have a reminder.
I think there are sidewalks there.
And just to discuss traffic briefly, and the road connection to Sienna Woods, that's a, that's a code requirement. You know, that's just something that the township requires, and it was actually established on the, on the Sienna Woods plans, to be, you know, to, there's a cul-de-sac there that was labeled to be vacated when street is extended. There's an easement for temporary turnaround. So we are making that road connection, and with that, there was some discussion of where to connect the plan, our planned road to Venetia. And we connected it so as to kind of discourage, you know, more of a cut-through, so it would, you know, kind of discourage through traffic by having to make, you know, various turning movements to...
Placing a further stop.
To go from one to the other, yeah. We're further west on Venetia than our other road that aligns with, or, you know, that is the Woodbrier Drive extended.
Can you tell me what the distance is between the end of Penelope Court and where Teaberry Lane? They're not connected, obviously, but do we know what, how much of the distance is there between those two?
Do you have a pointer?
If you look up there, this red button, that remote?
Which, from here to here?
So, no, no, so the end of Penelope Court, so the end of the long one, that's further west? Nope. Yep.
Okay.
And then I think that's, is that Teaberry?
It is, right ahead.
Yeah, Teaberry, do we know what the distance there is? And my second question, then, follow-up, would be, is there any kind of buffer that's going to be there? Will be the trees, are any of those being left there? I just saw something that said that all the trees are going to come down, so whatever is existing there, is that going to stay?
Yes. One way or another, I do believe the trees are on the adjoining property, so they would...
It's about 200.
They would certainly, they would certainly stay. And we do have landscaping proposed, consisting of mounding and a dense evergreen screening, which is why, you know, one of the reasons as a, you know, we thought good planning and, you know, consideration of the adjoining neighborhood, we don't have backyards backing up to that.
Right.
And we do keep the, you know, the turnaround, I believe it's 50 or so feet back from the boundary, to be able to put a appropriate, you know, mounding and evergreen screening in there, in addition to the trees in the wooded area to remain.
In addition to what's already there?
Correct.
Okay. And would the same thing hold true for the end of Luca Court?
Is that here?
Yeah, and then the distance between that and that neighboring, pretty large development?
Yeah, there's a, there's the drainage course through here.
Okay.
And that'll generally, that remains undisturbed. There is a fill slope associated with this, and there is also landscaping proposed at the end of that, but that offset distance is more significant than, just you can kind of gauge from scale here, it's probably over, I'm going to estimate, 200 feet?
It's 100 feet from the end of the cul-de-sac to the property line.
To the closest property line?
Yes.
Okay.
And to answer your other question from the cul-de-sac, on the west?
Yep.
It's 235 feet.
Okay, so more on the Peabody, Teaberry versus the Luca, and what that development The greater distance between Peabody and Teaberry?
Yep.
Okay.
And that's cul-de-sac to cul-de-sac.
Yep.
Thank you.
And are there natural, I just, when you guys looked at the barriers and things like that, that's something that was encompassed for us, bringing heavier?
Could you adjust the Wildbrier distance? It is significantly less than the other one.
Well, we'll take audience comments in a minute, okay?
Mr. Schleicher, do you have anything further?
Just to, just to kind of finish the presentation here, we do have a code-compliant plan. I know the planning director pointed out some, some things we're still working through, but for a preliminary overall development plan, you know, we, I believe we are code-compliant. We do have the planning director's review letter, which we've reviewed, also discussed, and we have no problem complying with those items. We also have the Gateway Engineers' Review dated February 22nd. I can go through any, all those items as you see fit, but we don't have any problem addressing those moving forward. And then the TPD engineer, you know, the traffic review, we actually have addressed some of those items, just knowing that, you know, the sensitive nature of the, of the traffic, we have addressed, you know, I don't want to speak for your engineer, but I think the main concerns that may have been brought up in there, so, yeah.
Did I see correctly that we've not received open space calculations to verify the percentages?
No, we did. We received it after we made those comments.
Okay. And everything we talked about here tonight, in terms of about 31%, is correct with the southern portion as open space?
Yes.
And then, from a traffic perspective, Mr. Mudry, would you agree that you reviewed everything, what outstanding items, concerns?
Yeah, and I want to address the one outstanding item, as, was like for a small traffic study to be done, and actually, John and Jim had sent something over this afternoon that I had a chance to look at, and I was satisfied that there's no traffic impact on it, the Venetia Road intersection. So they've addressed that.
Site distance, stopping distance, there's no concerns?
There's no concerns with that, and obviously, that's a, Venetia Road's a PennDOT road, so they'll also need to get a PennDOT permit for that, so they'll have to meet all PennDOT's criteria.
John, could you elaborate on the extra parking? I guess the development does need one parking per five units, which would be 11, I guess we have to round up that shit, but where are the, where are the five areas, and how many spaces in each area? It's not well depicted on our, at least not 11 for sure.
Yes. Just to, just to finish the thought on the Venetia Road, you know, traffic and, you know, connection matter with, with PennDOT, we have had a, what they call scoping meeting, which kind of lays out the guidelines for the actual permit process. So we've been through that, we had PennDOT and the township both signed off on, on the scope of that, of that work, and we are into PennDOT with our actual permit application, so that is moving forward. The guest parking, I should point out, we did have a driveway pull-off here with guest parking in a mailbox bank, but that was, that was one of the PennDOT comments, as well as the township traffic engineer did not care for the proximity of that driveway to Venetia. So we've more centrally, and that kind of lent itself to distributing those guest parking spaces throughout the site, so there's, I believe, three here?
It's actually four there.
Four here, thank you. And that includes the mailbox bank. And we did have a conversation with Mr. Holdren to, you know, perhaps increase the number of spaces where feasible.
So those four must be parallel, then, parallel parking spaces?
No, they are 90 degrees to the road, it's just a kind of a small scale to draw them.
If you add more parking space to that, will that necessarily then decrease the amount of open space, or do you think it can be worked in?
I think it can be worked in, because it would be basically taking out land from some of the existing single-family, proposed single-family homes. And one of the areas that, in discussions with Mr. Schleicher that we talked about was, looking, where am I here? At this particular parking lot here, there's two spaces, maybe that could be increased slightly, and also, given the fact that it's relatively centrally located, that would be kind of an ideal area to expand parking spaces. But they are perpendicular to the roadway, in all instances.
Okay.
And they're primarily contained within the road right-of-way.
Okay.
So, so we do have, I think I might be out of battery, nope, there we go. Four spaces here, I believe there's three at the end of this cul-de-sac, and there you can see the double row of evergreen plantings as well. We have three spaces here, and then three spaces at the end of this cul-de-sac with the double row of evergreen screen, and then two spaces in this area, so that was 3, 6, 9, 13, 15.
I think at the two cul-de-sacs, there are two spaces in each one.
Okay, 14.
Let me just kind of come off of the cul-de-sac. Let me just kind of come off of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
I just have a question. Oh, I'm sorry.
No question.
I just have a question about, um, lot 152. Um, that's the one that's closest to Venetia Road. As far as where the placement of that driveway is, do we know how close that is to, um, turning on and off of, uh, Venetia Road? It seems, it seems awfully close.
I don't know at this stage of the game if we actually have the location of the driveways. Typically, that's done at the time of, uh-
Yeah.
...issuance of building permits.
Proposed location.
Or apply for the building permits. But the way they're showing it on one of their plans, that it's actually on the front side of the lot, and we do have minimum requirements in terms of spacing of driveways in, in regards to intersections. I'm not sure what that distance is, but I know we do have minimum spacing.
You know, the driveways, like for the different, um, the different lots, are they like two side by side and then some space, or are they each like on the left or on the west side of each lot? How is that done?
It, it kind of depends on the, the profile of the road.
Mm-hmm.
So the, the driveway will generally be on the high side of the lot.
Okay.
In, in the case of lot 152, and that's, that's a good question, um, there's a, a 40-foot, uh, setback from, from Venetia Road that is being dedicated as open space. There's 40 feet, and then the lot, I think, is either 105 or 110 feet. So the driveway will be on the, the far side of the lot, uh, relative to Venetia Road. So that'd be about 100 and, 130 or so feet from, from Venetia Road.
And what's our setback requirement for from the road? I mean, if they're giving 40, what's, what's our minimum?
For a driveway?
Well, for just the setback from, for any of these.
The setbacks on, side setbacks are seven and a half feet. Um, and then we also require for this type of development, I believe it's either 40 or 45-foot buffer along Venetia Road.
Right.
So it must be 40 if that's what he's saying, and it is.
It's 40.
It's 40.
The homes depicted, basement slab, a little bit above, or none of the above?
Uh, they will all have basements. Uh, some being walkouts, uh, some being below grade, and some being with, uh, I would call a partial side where the, uh, the, the backyard would be at the first floor level, but there would be a, a walkout on the side, on the low side of that. So it'd be three foundation types, but, but all, all to have foundations.
I noticed in staff's comments, there was a question of emergency vehicle access circulation, school buses, fire trucks. Has that been taken care of? We reviewed that, and we were confident that this alignment works.
I'm going to defer to our engineers on that one.
That, I, that's still something we're waiting for is the fire truck. I mean, I, and I think that just has to do with intersection radius.
I would agree, yeah.
So, I mean, it, it's something, I think that's a kind of a final design kind of issue that we could address. Cause the street whiffs are all standard township street whiffs, so.
Anything else, Mr. Schlecker?
Uh, no, unless there's any questions from, from the board.
Just, we'll, a few audience comments. We're going to start on this side. So if you have a question on this side, please let us know. Come on up, state your name, your address, and sign in, please. Anyone? Sir?
Just start.
You have a helmet, your name and, uh-
My name's Alrich Sandala, 125 Scenic Ridge. Um, my comments are, I think the, um, open space should all be included on the side where the homes are being built, at least at 25% over there. And the other comment or feedback I would have is on the property of 120. I think it goes down into the creek, and I think that's taken over that, that creek right there for open space that's been there forever. That property line extends down in there, at least from the drawing. I can't say for facts because I'm only looking at a drawing. But I think that property should be open space, cause it shouldn't be built on top of a creek.
I believe you're referring to-
120.
That's the number.
Yeah.
Far left corner.
Are you proposing stream impacts there, Mr. Schlecker?
No, sir.
How far is it away from the stream?
Well, well, the, the lot itself-
Please, thank you.
I'm just saying from your drawings, it looks like the property line goes into the creek.
You're correct. The property line does, but there will not be any construction that extends, you know, the, the full depth of the lot. There's, there's a rear yard setback that's, uh, depicted on there, and then, uh, but beyond that, again, these, these are larger lots with, you know, pretty deep, you know, rear yards.
Can we, can we tell, um, how large the lot is at 120? Is that the one that's .48 or .38?
If you zoom in, it's .38 acres.
.38? Thank you. I can't see that. That's way too small.
So .38, we, we could, we could cut the corner off of that. We could put a conservation easement over that.
And I, I think you do show the floodway on there. I assume that's a 50-foot offset. I'm not sure if that is or not. Be sure some level of-
It dips down from there. It's an elevation down to the creek.
I would be concerned about, you know, that being filled in if it's not, if it's not H-Way property.
Uh, yeah, that, that's something we can, we can certainly look at. And, uh, yeah, you're correct. There is a, uh, a, a drainage easement or a, I, I forget what it's called. There's a township requirement for an easement over, over the drainage course.
Uh, real quickly, Mr. Schlecker, I was wondering if you could explain what this-
Green.
What this green hatched area means?
Yes, uh, this is a landscape, this is our landscaping plan. Uh, so, so in addition to the individual trees, there's hatching for the slope areas that are, that are to be, uh, planted with a certain, either certain planting mix or, or maybe some, uh, some small trees. I, I can't recall, but, but that's what that hatching represents.
So then I guess then my concern is, is that if you take a look at lot 120, and you add in that there's, you know, conservation, and then you add in that there's landscaping, is the, whoever buys that property, are they, are they really getting at least a quarter acre there? I mean, cause if, if it's acres, they can't do anything with, right?
That would be my question, Mr. Schlecker, is, is, are the notes, cause if this section refers to you to notes on the plan, does that restrict development in that particular area? Development of a single-family house? In other words, they'll have to stay out of that area?
The, the, the slope hatching does not have any sort of, uh, protective covenant over it, but, but the stream does. But nonetheless, we'll, we'll cut the corner of that lot to, 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 to keep it out of the stream, but it's-
And the lot's going to make that, I'm just saying that the lot still has to comply, though, right?
And maintain a third of an acre, yes, thank you.
Well, yes.
Yeah. We actually exceed the third of an acre, uh, on that one, and we definitely have, again, they're, they're large lots. They, they exceed, uh, well exceed the required lot width as well as the area. We have, we have some flexibility to-
Okay, so maybe you can address those things we talked about, and the lot will still be compliant as far as from the lot size?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
Anything else, sir?
No, as long as there, there would, you know, the trees or down around that creek area is replaced. That was my biggest concern, that that property, that one property right there would be on, so close to the creek, they wouldn't even have a backyard or do anything. So as long as there was a gap being kept, that you, you're stating, that was my comments.
Thank you.
Cause I just, I just think that there should be separation there between a home and, um, that, that open space that's presently there. That's all my comments were.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
But before you sit down, can you write your name and address in?
Yes.
Because the secretary has to do the minutes.
I will.
Anyone else on this side of the room? Uh-oh. Nope. Oh, sir.
We have a second side sheet on this side. Sign in on this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Okay. Um, my name is John Bensey, uh, 105 Honeywood Court. Uh, you probably see my name on the plan there. Um, I do have, you know, a couple of questions here. I think that my concern, along with others in the group, and I appreciate the folks on the panel here have asked that question so far, is just the inclusion of the open space being across the road, across a state route, not contiguous to the neighborhood. I don't believe that that is, you know, in the spirit of the point of open spaces. The point of an open space in a neighborhood is that it is in fact inside your neighborhood, not across a state route. Do, do we know what the ADT of that road is?
Not on that map.
I tried to look it up on the local maps. SR 1006 is, is, is not labeled. So my point is an open space across a state route that has absolutely no access to the neighborhood. I, I, you know, I realize that maybe by the letter of the law, that you believe that that's the case. I just think that practically, it's just not part of the neighborhood. Um, I, I do ask that you guys as developers make a compromise and incorporate that end of the neighborhood, um, because I believe the risks are high, right? If this doesn't get approved, this plan won't go through because the change, the-
They should have addressed us rather than-
They, they changed, the changes have been made, right? So in the future, a plan like this would not be approved.
We can really see that one.
But, okay, my, my, my point taken. So, so that, that's really my question. Another question I have is, in the area that's hatched that we were talking about, the landscaping, um, which is right across from the, uh, stream there, are we to, uh, expect that all the massive old trees in that area will be removed if impacted by that, that new slope? Uh, you don't necessarily have to answer that question now. There's a lot of folks in here that probably want to say, you know, a number of the things that, that I did. Um, little things, this doesn't particularly matter. On page five and seven, they didn't update the existing homeowners on, uh, on my neighbor. Um, it shows Imran Khan instead of the current ones. That's correct on eight and certain others. Um, I guess the one other question was, did they run auto turn? I'm guessing that didn't happen. That's more part of final design work preliminary, so no.
That's what we're, yeah, that's what we're asking for.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then as far as the, the code requirement to connect to Sienna Woods, uh, I guess my question is, what, why is that being, um, brought to our attention? Is the intent because the township wants to connect that, or is the intent because otherwise a cul-de-sac would have to be placed closer, uh, and they would not be able to put as many houses in there? Um, when it's, when they say that it, there's a code requirement to connect at Sienna Woods, what does that mean? Is that coming from the township, or is that coming from the developer?
And I know the manager can speak to this probably better than anyone, but, well, I think, Paul, Sienna Woods has interconnectivity. When that was constructed, they tried to tie as many neighborhoods as they can together. So this is usually required of the township for the applicant, but the, the manager knows this better than anyone, cause it dovetails with the comprehensive plan of the township.
Well, and, and the township has, for as long as I've been here, and that's now 40 years, has had a policy of interconnecting plans. So if you look at the reported plan on the adjacent plan, you will see a temporary cul-de-sac with the intention of it being connected through. The reason why those connections are important is for access for particularly emergency service providers, police, fire, ambulance. Um, in addition to that, it, it increases our efficiency to be able to do things like, like snow removal. Um, the township council looked at this specifically, um, uh, last year and formally adopted a policy, once again, affirming the desire to have these interconnections of these plans. So that's, having two ways in and out has always been. And there have been, um, on occasion where we have, do not have multiple accesses yet, um, situations that have, um, caused people to be trapped in their plan because of an emergency. You know, the one recently up on Locust Drive. We had one over, um, on George Drive. We had a fire, um, up in Giant Oaks, and people couldn't get out of the plan because there was no way to get around. There was another access. So that's the very rationale.
Like where, you know, you know, the direction where that came from.
That makes sense.
But I, I said, really my main concern is that, um, if, if we look at this from a neighborhood perspective, the intent behind open spaces is that they are part of the neighborhood. I don't think something across a state route that potentially has, you know, thousands of cars running across it every day with heavy truck traffic is, is part of a neighborhood. And it just seems to me not, it, it doesn't seem appropriate to count that as part of the open space of the neighborhood, because I don't believe that it's contiguous to the neighborhood. And that is my opinion.
Yeah.
You know, there are others, and that's really what I don't want to bring forth. So, thank you.
Can I just comment to you on that just a second? So one of the things just to keep in mind, you know, with the different, with these, is that the open space, you know, can be achieved at, I mean, the open space requirement can be achieved in a number of different manners, right? And if, and it can meet into the, when the township, when the developers look at things, they try and find different ways to meet all the requirements. Here, I think you probably heard the developer say that the lots, you know, across the board here for whoever moves into these, these neighborhoods, the lots are larger than they would have to be in accordance, and be in accordance with our township zoning ordinance requirements. So if we'd said, you know, like, hey, you got to make more open space, so you got to get to that 31% on the northern side of this lot, the other way the developer could do that is simply by shrinking the size of each particular lot, and they could still meet that requirement. So what they're required to do is meet our requirements, and we do ask them a lot of times to exceed that, right? And here, when we said, when we had a previous, um, plan that had like 83 houses on it, right?
Yeah.
So all I'm saying is that I understand totally what you're saying, that there's this kind of useless piece of, piece of land sitting across the street. But I guess what I'm also saying is that even if we relooked at this and said, listen, you got to have all of your, you got to have all of your open space on the northern side of the lot, that could be achieved in different ways. And one of the ways that could be achieved is having a smaller lot size, and then they could get that, and everybody who moves in is on quarter acre lots, or quarter to third of acre lots, rather than a third to almost half acre lots.
Yeah, I-
So just so you know.
No, I understand, and there may be many in the, in the audience that disagree, but to me-
No, no, no.
-that would be more in the spirit of the neighborhood, even if it meant smaller lots. And, you know, I'm sure there's some that disagree with me, but it would at least be part of the neighborhood, right? Because in open space, what is the intent of an open space? If you say, where's my open space, and someone says down the street, does that make any sense? That's really my point.
Yeah, open space is really spread throughout the whole neighborhood.
Yeah.
It's not like set up to be like a playground or anything like that. And so, and just, just, so, and the same thing on the lot sizes, you know, only certain percentage of the lot's size is allowed to be covered by, by a home or a structure. So, so as far as open, meaning undeveloped, you, you get to it a bunch of different ways. And the way it's done here, just, just looking at it, here's that then the, then more people have ownership over, over larger portions of land than they otherwise would. So I just wanted to throw the other side of the question out.
And as we said before, from the township standpoint, the bigger lots reduced, took 30 homes off of this development, and that was more advantageous for us than having them go back down to quarter acre lots with more open space, but with more homes and more traffic. So I get the balance, and I'm with you. Across the street, it's a bitter pill to swallow sometimes, but that's how the, the code reads at the moment.
Is the, across the street already zoned residential, or what is it zoned?
West Venetia Road.
Yeah, it's on the front page of the, it's on the first.
And my, I guess where I'm going-
West Venetia Road mixed-use corridor.
Okay, my, just, my point is if that could be incorporated in the neighborhood, that's opportunity for business. Those are, you know, potential, you know, lost tax dollars that could be filled by business along that road, which seems more in, you know, in line with what that lot would be for, you know, along Venetia Road if those are incorporated in. And so-
The point taken, I get it, yeah.
Yeah. Just, I also want to watch what we're balancing, what everybody's balancing here is more houses, smaller lots. So the smaller lot doesn't mean you get more open space. It sometimes just means you get more houses.
Thank you. With our preliminary application, is an inventory analysis required for conservation residential?
This one was not required, uh, primarily because it's limited impact to the natural resources that we identified at the time.
Understood. That would kind of speak to the trees then at the time?
Yeah.
Anyone else on the right side?
Can I just, the, the open space question?
Sure.
Just real quick, because it's a, it's a fair question, and just to put a, uh-
Could you also address the tree question then while you're up here?
Yeah, yeah, I'd be glad to. Uh, so if you take the open space just on the northern parcel, as was-
Which one do you want up here, Jim?
Uh, a, a, as was the, again, the, the original design did have the 25% requirement solely on, on the northern parcel. Um, but if you factor in the open space only on the northern parcel, these lots, and distributed over the, over the 52 lots, these lots averaged over a half acre, closer to like .58 acres in comparison. And again, I'm trying to be consistent with, with the surrounding neighborhoods. Uh, the Sienna Woods does not have open space, correct? That, that was a conventional half acre development. So, so those are hap- so, so again, the lots, when factoring in the open space, ignoring the, the, the southern parcel, or equivalent, or maybe a little bit greater than the average lot area in, in Sienna Woods, so. Does that make sense, that?
I understand what you're saying.
I understand what you're saying, yeah.
What's the open space without the southern? What is that again, is that?
It's 20%.
20%.
Roughly 20%, maybe 21% even, but it's, it's right around there.
Okay.
And you had a tree question?
There was a tree question. Is that, are any of the existing trees, I think, on the, on the perimeters? Is that, I think that was the question, right? Are those, well, any of those stay?
I think it was at least a perimeter screen, yeah.
Behind where 120 was, I think.
Are these trees up in here? There is an existing tree road. It's actually, it looks like from the aerial that it follows basically where the stream is.
Right, so like 120 through like 113, 109, right?
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's a significant amount of trees coming out of the duty grid, it seems.
Uh, could you pull the Google?
Oh, Google, alright.
Rock over the hatched area would require tree removal. That's all, it's all slope.
Yeah, that's all. We're plinning that back with grass, I believe.
Uh, correct, or grass. Correct, or ground cover. So, anything on the eastern, between the eastern side of the stream and the property boundary is undisturbed. And anything, you know, depending on the stream, and depending on the, the fill slope, 10 to 20 feet from the western side of the stream is, is undisturbed. So, beyond there, there's, there's, I believe will be some tree clearing, particularly in the northeast portion.
Anyone else on the right side of the room? Sir?
Chris Short, 330 Venetia Road, the only house, office.
Can you say your name, please?
Chris Short. I'm the only one on the west side of the street. If you zoom in on the map, my only, two concerns. One would be the sanitary tie-in, because the sanitary tie-in comes down, comes through easement in my backyard and taps in like 10 feet from my tap. So, is the sanitary infrastructure gonna work, or is my basement gonna fill up? And number two is the stormwater retention on the other side of the street. I don't know that there was any evaluation. I know on their plan, it doesn't show the new garage I built on there. But essentially, that puts me under, like, if you have a storm and that fills up, I believe my basement and my garage are below the top of the levee of the dam.
Are you the one that has the easement through the southern portion of the spread?
Yes.
Can you show us where your property is?
So, there's a big, you know, stormwater retention that goes in right here and cuts off these trees and the old former foundation.
Is that stormwater, Mr. Schlecker, that's stormwater upon infiltration bond, or is that?
I believe it's both. Infiltration and with certain events retains water as well.
And which direction does it discharge?
It discharges to the south.
Creek.
The township in the future, they, township maintains those, those areas going forward?
Yes.
I would suggest that at a minimum, that be addressed, final submission, that we look at the hydraulics there, what the overland relief is, and what any emergency spillway looks like in terms of that effluent from the pond there. Make sure it stays within the property. It doesn't back up into, you know, the flood plain if you will there.
Is there any proposed buffer next to his home for that feature?
It doesn't appear so. They're graded, very close to it.
Appears they're graded, 10 feet of the property.
Yeah, there are some plantings up in this. I don't know if you can see my cursor, but it is minimal.
We can certainly enhance that.
And the buffer is not required because it's a stormwater management. So, we have a perimeter buffer around the majority of the site, but on this southern portion, it's not required because that's just a stormwater management infrastructure.
That, that's the way it's being proposed, yeah. That's the way we were interpreting it.
Will that affect the stormwater from the rec center?
No. I mean, that's a dry pond, I assume?
Yes.
So, that'll be a, it'll be a basin that'll be empty for the majority of time. Between rain events, it'll go up and down.
Who maintains it?
That'd be the HOA. Well, I'm gonna, just slightly gonna correct you. The, the landscaping around the pond will be the responsibility of the HOA. The pond itself will be maintained by the township. We have a responsibility for managing stormwater, and what we have found over time, HOAs are not in a position, as the township is, to maintain that pond so that, in fact, functions as it should.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else? Sir?
Tim Silveralski, McCombs Road. I just wanted to ask the developers.
What was the full address?
I'm sorry?
What was the full address?
356 McCombs Road. I just wanted to ask the developer, as far as you mentioned high-end homes, and I know over on, Just About Farms just track homes, that they just go side in.
Could you, could you speak into the mic?
I'm sorry. They put white, I'm, I'm just kinda, yeah, I'm sorry. They put white, all the houses have white windows. They all have white soft fascia. They all have the same exact shingles. Obviously, they're very close together. I'm very opposed, honestly, to the quarter acre lots. I think all the lots should be half acre in Peters Township. But my question to the developer is, is there gonna be some brick introduced? Is there gonna be different colored windows? Is, are they gonna look like the picture that he just showed here? Or are they just gonna, is that the sales picture, and then they're gonna be more just typical track homes, like a Ryan home or Miranda? Or are they gonna be more?
I think that's a fair question, because I'll tell you, council asked the same question to the developer.
All six, all six of them. All six, what? There they are. Right there.
Yep.
Six.
That's certainly a fair question. The, the anticipated price on these would be 1.5 million and up, probably, probably closer, closer to 2 million typically.
And I think the material-wise, what's being depicted up on the screen, brick, I think what he's saying, it's not the same house, and I think your answer is not. It's one of these six models, and they have various stone, brick, is that what I can see, features?
Yeah, and, and these are, these are typical. These aren't the only six, you know, house plans that are being offered. And they'll be in the neighborhood at 10,000 square feet total, total floor area. So, and.
And they're on one-third minimum acres, not quarter.
Right.
Yeah. Honestly, I still think, I know, it's okay, the half acre's still better. I just know, like I said, and I know that Just About Farms beat the death every time it comes up. But like, the first house, when you pull in on the right, my truck wouldn't fit in the driveway. It's that short. So, like, the driveways, is it gonna be asphalt or everything concrete?
I, I'm not sure about the driveways. I, I couldn't say for sure, but.
It seems like, and I don't mean to interrupt you, it's like, sometimes, everything goes through, and we show pretty pictures, and then all of a sudden, hey, let's just try to get it done, and then move on to the next one.
Yeah, the, to, to compare to Just About Farms, this has a different roadway width, for starters.
Yeah, that's, that's a mess over there.
It has, it has a, a, a larger front building setback as well.
Okay.
So, so there's just more space in, in the roadway and front to front on the houses.
Okay.
And then the choices that are offered are choices that then whoever the, the home buyer is, they, they choose among between six and 12, or whatever it is, as far as what they want their home to look like.
Yeah, exactly. These will all be.
But with that said.
Wait, let him finish his answer for you, Mark.
You're, you're correct. I, I don't know how many products, and I can certainly provide more information on that moving forward. This, again, we're preliminary, you know, master plan approval, and we could provide more information on the, on the, on the house, you know, the product itself.
So, if, would, would, if a buyer wanted to keep buying the same house, would you, like, only, like, every five houses can repeat, or every 10 houses can only repeat?
Yeah, that's, that's more of a, a, a sales question, but, yeah, most definitely there are, and, and I'm not familiar with those, you know, options and, and choices and.
Yeah.
And rules, but absolutely, yeah.
And it just has nothing to do with you.
And same with Keller, you know, they wouldn't repeat the same Keller either next door or across the street.
And just to be clear, we don't have the ability to dictate what the architectural aesthetic is from a single-family home.
Okay, you don't, you guys have any control of that?
That's not, I mean, there's certain ordinances, there's certainly the orders that dictate, you know, what goes on there and what the requirements are. But as far as like whether the houses are gray, or the, or somebody, you know, they offer different plans, and then what people pick, that's not something that the township governs.
Okay. Even if they're gonna repeat my thing, like, the Westbury, they're, I mean, they're all the same.
I mean, is it one person really likes a particular, yeah, one person really likes a particular style, and that's what they want?
But it kind of, it kind of depreciates the, the property value too.
It's not something we can, we can govern here.
Yeah. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else from the center? Sir?
Tom O'Donnell, 117 Hardwood. Couple things. Has anybody, is there any other plans in Peters Township that have these supplemental parking spaces? Is there any other plan that has that? Has anybody looked at it? Does it work? Who clears those parking space? Who's responsible to keep those parking spaces clear with snow, et cetera? It doesn't seem very feasible to me.
In terms of the, it's my understanding that the developer will be, they're gonna have to develop, but the homeowners association will be in charge of the maintenance of those, and that will need to be noted on the plan itself, if it isn't already. In terms of plans that already have that, I know some proposed plans have them. I'm not sure about the ones that are existing and built at the moment.
Sherwood Pond.
It's Sherwood Pond.
Has anybody ever monitored those to see if they actually work, if people use them, or they just sort of wasted additional pay?
I can tell you, Sherwood Pond, I have been there, and there have been cars in those spaces.
Yeah. But is it really guest people, or is it?
Well, it's, it's somebody who, somebody who's visiting there, who, who is using that to park the access to those homes. I can't tell you who that is.
The idea is to keep the cars off the street, right? And when people have events or what have you, it's, it's really, and I know our traffic is, we can speak better than us, but it's the more growing trend, because there's a need for these neighborhoods that can't support having 20 people over, that there has to be some parking that doesn't block the streets. So, we do as many as we can.
I know, I've used them in other neighborhoods and other, like, when I've gone and visit people, and you just go, and if you're going for a party, whenever they direct you are. I mean, I know I've used them in other, other areas. And so, then, then you don't have, like we have here, a row of 20 cars.
But do people know that that's what, I mean, how do you know that's a guest spot and not associated with the house that's right there?
Well, I think, obviously, the people that live in the plan would know, because they're HOA-driven, they're members, they're gonna find out. And it's on their plan, it'll be depicted in their drawings. But, again, I think, to me, it's more of a township request, because we, we see the concern for parking in these neighborhoods, that we usually require the developer to put in offset parking like that, offset parking for visitors or what have you.
Okay. Another question is, why do we want such high-density, high-density plan? Why, why do we need all of those houses there? Why can't we do something more in line with the rest of Peters Township? I understand that you're allowed to have that, but why do we want it? Why, why do we need it?
Mr. O'Donnell, this was submitted underneath the conservation overlay ordinance, and that's where it's being heard under. There's been some changes since then based upon some public opinion that we received here in these chambers, but this has been submitted underneath the conservation residential ordinance. This, this is basically underneath that provision, in that section of laws.
Did anybody look at how this compares with, say, Great Meadows, in terms of the density and the look, so that it's sort of consistent with what's around there? I mean, I understand working with numbers, but in terms of the layout and the comparison, you know, comparables, how does it compare with the rest of the surrounding neighborhood?
So, I guess. I don't, I don't think that we're trying to mimic a whole township or any particular development. You know, we, we have flexible housing. We're supposed to have flexible housing throughout the township, so we're not trying to mimic any.
No, I wasn't suggesting a mimic. I'm, I'm saying in terms of.
Or, or trying to resemble another community.
Right. That, I, I'm saying in terms of ratio of building space to open space, how does it compare with something like, like Great Meadows? I mean, I think he mentioned that it was comparable with the surrounding neighborhood. I haven't seen the numbers. What are the setbacks of Great Meadows? What are the house-to-house distances of Great Meadows? What are the size of the house on the lot in Great Meadows in comparison with this? I mean, it sounds like.
Well, I think we already had a similar, as you said, this came under the CR overlay, and those other ones perhaps were different supplemental, quite cherry altogether.
Yes. Generally speaking, throughout the township, different areas of the township are zoned differently, right? So, some are, and it's based upon how the township is zoned throughout the township as a whole. So, Great Meadows is, is that land, you know, when it was undeveloped, was zoned a certain way. And then, when developers come in, they have a number of decisions as far as how large or small. So, if you're in, if you're in a, that conservation overlay, which is where it was, your only requirement was to do quarter acre lots. Whereas, in a different zoned area, the requirements are different. And so then, the developer goes in and looks at probably, you know, a lot of market studies, things like that, and then decides what size lot within our zoning requirements. And the zoning requirements are set forth in the master plan that's been around now for about 10 years, and then it was again about six to eight months ago, that some of those, these conservation overlay districts were eliminated. But if you have a plan in before it was eliminated, then, then you get in under the old ordinance. And so, it's across the township. And I would say, as far as looking at, like, the township's looking or developments or neighborhoods looking like other, other neighborhoods, we've got neighborhoods that are very, very old, right? We've got neighborhoods with really, really small houses on them. And we wouldn't have ever said, like, we want all houses to only be 1,000 square feet, generally, as we have in old Peters Township. So, everything goes to, and it's not, we can't really look at this on a need, do we need more houses? Do we need more people here? It's based upon how the township is, is zoned. And based upon how it is zoned dictates what the setbacks are, what those requirements are across the board. We can't really change that for every little, because it's spot zoning, and that's against the law. So, we can't do that either. And we have to provide different alternatives throughout the township as far as what different types of housing can be available. And here, we've got single-family housing with large houses on them. And so, from the standpoint of Great Meadows, has single-family homes with larger-sized houses on them. And some of Great Meadows has bigger spots than bigger, you know, bigger lots than other sites do. So, it's consistent in that way. The houses aren't gonna all look the same, but it's consistent in the sense that these are all single-family homes. And they do have actually larger lots than some of Great, um, Great Meadows I think would have, because we've got some lots here that are almost half an acre in size.
Okay. Now, what about the traffic? Is there some sort of consideration for this density plan and all of that traffic potentially going out in a certain, in a certain direction, and adding a lot of traffic to another neighborhood? How, how does that all shake out?
Yeah, we, we've had Mr. Mondria, traffic engineer, review the plans in addition to, you know, essentially with our codes, and we understand there's not an issue as currently submitted, correct?
So, there was a traffic study?
So, there was a traffic, it was a, I think it was a partial traffic study, or there was some traffic information put forward.
Yeah, yeah, usually in the code, it's either 75 or 100 trips in an hour, and this development is at a 54 trips an hour. So, that's the threshold that we do, whether it's a big traffic study where we're studying multiple intersections. Actually, the, the size of this development is actually under the threshold to require a traffic study, but there's always an exception in there if we have a concern that we can do that. And we did ask for some traffic data from the applicant, just because we know how busy Venetia Road is. You know, there, you know, any development along Venetia Road, we're checking for left-turn lanes and things like that. And then, also, the interconnection with the adjacent neighborhood, we're, we're keeping an eye to see what those traffic numbers are. And it all was below the threshold for a traffic study, first of all. But again, they did provide some traffic data for the perimeter of the site that we looked at, and we're satisfied. The same thing with PennDOT also. PennDOT also looks at those numbers.
But as a whole, everything is set for ahead of time. It's not as if a, you know, development comes in, or application comes in, and then we decide, like, what we want and what we don't want, and what the requirements are, and we're not gonna be there. It's all laid out in the township ordinance that outlines it based upon certain criteria, and as Mike uses an example here, the size of the development decides and already dictates, you know, what, what the requirements are for the developer. And then there's, then there's, you know, there are areas where we say, like, if we have concerns, then we can require a traffic study or a traffic components that we didn't already, we didn't already have. And that, I think, happened here.
Correct.
But as far as the size and when, what is required when, that's all, that's all set up, so the developer, whomever is looking at this, can go in and they know what the requirements are before they ever step foot in here, or ever meet with the township at all.
Okay. Does your traffic study also consider, like, the location of the school? Like, we have Bauer Hill School right on Bauer Hill Road, and that would sort of be, you know, a main route through Sienna Woods to get up to Bauer Hill School. Is that, is considerations like that included in the traffic study?
Yes. I mean, not specifically the school per se, but we look at where, where we think people are gonna go in and out of the developments and the neighborhoods, and we assign traffic, basically, and analyze that and look at that.
And Mike, is that the trips that you're talking about?
The trips, yes.
That's what you, when you're talking about trips, it's how many times is somebody gonna come and go from a particular home on a particular day, right?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the center? Yep, come on up. Anyone mind stating your name when you get up here as well as signing your signature?
Rudolph Rubies 104, Wildbrier Drive. Wildbrier Drive hasn't been talked about that much. What is the anticipated traffic increase on Wildbrier Drive of Hardwood?
I mean, and Jim could speak to this, because it's the, it's some of the data that the applicant provided, but then it was some background information that I looked at also. So, I, I did a pretty conservative estimate, saying that even up to 40% of this development would go out Wildbrier. I don't know if that's true or not. That was a high estimate that I wanted to use as a threshold to measure this.
To get to those 30.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying.
Folks, we're not, we're gonna, we're gonna clap one at a time, folks. We're gonna clap one at a time.
I'm saying for all traffic, all day. 40% would go out the back, 60% would go down to Venetia Road. So, on that percentage, on a daily basis, that's. So on that percentage, on a daily basis, that's 221 cars a day would be, would be leading the plan and using Wildbrier.
There's about five cars that go up Wildbrier, right?
And that would be on top of the, right.
How many? I think there's 200, 200 and how many?
I would, I would estimate, the forecasted number would be 221 cars a day.
That's assuming the mothers and fathers choose not to use Venetia, and they won't use Venetia.
Well, I mean, there's people that go to work, there's people that go shopping, there's people like, if I'm going down to the lower half of the township or to North Strabane, I'm going up Venetia Road, I'm not coming up, you know. We're looking at that as, it's not just people going to school, we're looking at where everybody goes throughout the day. Or if I'm going somewhere, if I got to get over to 43 in Findleville, I'm coming out to Venetia Road and I'm going out in that direction. So that's where we, we're looking at the whole thing, not, you know, just people going to drop their kids off at school. That's in the numbers, but I'm saying this is everybody, like going to work, going to drop your kid off, going to the store.
We would just, we please, please ask that you, that you look at that, the Wildbrier Drive to Hartford. And if someone were to sit there and see 200, his number, with all due respect, 240 cars, that's a hopeful number. What about if that number's not accurate? It's 300 trips a day. That's a significant amount of increased traffic on that very short drive that we Very significant. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Wildbrier, Mike, is designed and constructed to township standards? Yes.
Thank you. Sir.
Dustin K., 230 Bower Hill Road. So is this Wildbrier here? I'm sorry to break my appearance. So I live, this isn't going to impact me at all, so I don't have any skin in the game here, but I just question the logic of decisions being made here. I'm like, in here, it's not going to affect me at all because there's no way these people are coming down there. They're all going through, they're all going there, 99.9%. I don't know where you get your numbers, but there's no way. Okay, let's just say, these are nice houses, you're going to have families that have kids in, let's just say kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, all going up to Bower Hill. They are all, every one of these people, there is not one person going to come here. No way in hell. They're going that way or that way. They're going that way, that way, that way. They're going that way, that way, that way. They're all going through there, every one of them. There's, there's no way. How do you get that 40% number? And I'm not, I don't want to insult you, but there's no way in hell.
Actually, what you're saying is, I understand what you're saying now.
It's not even 8%.
But if every single person has kids and takes them-
They are, and they are going.
I'm not interrupting you, so please don't interrupt me.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
If every single one of them drives their kids to school five days a week.
You've been to Bower Hill.
Right. I live in the area, right. If every single one of them does not put their kids on the bus and drives their kids to school rather than going out through Venetia, you're saying they're going to come through here. That's your point, right? Okay, okay.
Where do you, can I just ask where we derive that 40% number from?
Well, sure. Like I said, it's not just people driving to the school, it's people that are going to work, it's people that go to the store, it's people if I'm going over to, if I go over to Findleville and get on 43, if I'm going down into North Strabane, I'm going to use Venetia Road. I'm not going to go out through the back of the plan with all the, and even like John said, the plan's meant to design to discourage people from cutting through, and there's going to be some traffic calming features in the plan.
Do you live in Peters Township?
No, I don't.
I mean, and I'm not trying to be insulting at all, but you, you need to put people in the streets and see true realistic numbers. I can tell you the number of people, there's not too many people that go to 43 in Peters Township. Most people work up this way. It doesn't, I mean, you need to have better scientific means to get to your decisions because the logic is not true, perception's not what you're talking about here. Come down there, the township needs to put some things on the road. No one goes south. You don't shop at Findleville Giant Eagle. They shop at Peters Township Giant Eagle. That's this way. No one goes this way, no one goes this way. You might go to the country store, but 99% of the people are going this way. And they go through the path of least resistance, they all drive their kids to the school in Peters Township, and I'm not making a statement, but that's what happens. Go up there at noon, every mom in the township's dropping their kid off her dad, they're all going to be going up that territory. I mean, we know it.
Mr. McKay.
It boggles my mind that you guys have the perception you have because it's so, like I said, I have no skin in the game. I'm protected, that's why I live where I live. They go that way or that way. But the perception here is totally off base. I can't believe I'm even hearing this. It's embarrassing, embarrassing.
Sir, we're not going to be insulting here, okay? You made your point, sir, and I appreciate your point, but we're not going to insult people here.
My name's Ed Gunna. Level 112, Wildbrier Drive, right at the entrance of the potential cut-in. Last house down.
Yeah, practically. Right here, the house is right here. And this, just drawing incidentally, is out of scale. In comparison to the maps, things are much closer in the maps than they are in this drawing. And that was one of the concerns that I had.
Again, I'm right on that edge of that, at East, Wildbrier Drive, and, you know, right now, we probably get five cars a day going up and down Wildbrier Drive. I agree wholeheartedly with the gentleman that went before me, 90% of the people, it's not going to be 40%, it's going to be 90%, are going to be heading up in that direction north. Because, yeah, it's not just going to work. You have the municipal buildings, the whole complex down, going to Valley Brook Road, you want to get on Route 19, you cut through. No one, virtually no one is going to go the other way. We're going to get all of that traffic on the Wildbrier Drive and continuing through the plan, and it's going to be an unsafe condition. It's clearly going to be an unsafe condition, and I really think that that would be thought long and hard before, you know, decision is made to do that. As a matter of fact, I mean, I think that the best thing to do in my mind, gentlemen, would be to not have this entrance, keep it the way it is, keep the, and put another entrance right here. You know, have a road from down here, and have two entrances, if you want to have two entrances, have them both come out on the Venetia Road. That's, that's, that's the, you know. Yeah, I mean, that makes sense. Why go through the plan when you've got a much larger road to deal with and you can get rid of some watch? You can, you know, I'm sitting right here, but another concern of ours, our house sits right here, and then according to the map that I was seeing on the website, our back door is going to be, our bedroom window is going to be in, you know, this person's, in their yard. Essentially, a way to increase the green space is to get rid of this lot, I propose that, and get rid of this lot, and you're going to have more green space and give, you know, give this whole area continuation of the rural atmosphere of Peters Head through the years. I think we all moved here because of the general rural nature of Venetia and surrounding areas, and we're getting away from that with this high-density construction. It's just, it's really kind of disappointing. We've lived in a township for 48 years, and it just continues to get smaller and smaller and smaller, and I think it's just, we're getting sent in the wrong message. I think you did a good job in trying to, you know, increase the size here, but we need to have a little more green space in this area, you know, because nobody in the world is going to be using this area over here.
Thank you, Mr. Gunna.
Bottom left, we need a little green space over there. You got the same.
I agree, I agree. You know, just eliminate a bunch of these lots on this side and just to give a little bit of space and make these folks happy, you know, keep all of us happy.
Thank you, Mr. Gunna. We've, we've heard a lot about traffic on Wildbrier, and we're relying on our experts who have requested the necessary information, they believe, and we're providing recommendations to this council. This commission, excuse me. So if there's other comments and questions, I would love to hear them, both from a traffic perspective, we're going to keep going around that circle about, you know.
Look, if I finish this, I would propose, again, trying to ease off, but equally as important from our personal standpoint is to eliminate this lot, make this a green space lot and get rid of this parking space. Yeah, that doesn't make any sense to have a parking space for two vehicles, four vehicles everywhere at this end. I really would think that that should be remedied as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any comments not on traffic? Sir.
My name's Alex O'Neil, 105 Wildbrier. First of all, I want to thank you all for being on Planning Commission. I sit up here on zoning commission, so I know what it's like to be up here and have a room concerned residents worried about their neighborhood. I appreciate what you guys are doing, I know it's a thankless unpaid volunteer position. That said, I did plan to make one comment on the traffic. I am a licensed civil engineer, and I will say, 19, you go north, 79, you go north. Just everyone who lives in this area, you do go north. I do encourage you, reevaluate the 40%. I, it does not make logical sense. I understand why we're saying 43, Venetia's the main road through that area. Everyone, all the schools, all the township, everything is north. You go out that way, someone may have come out North Strabane, my family's North Strabane. I drove, I go out through Bower Hill to get there. It is the natural flow through that area. Two, I wanted to mention, and I won't belabor the point, I agree with what Mr. Binsay said earlier about the green space. I don't necessarily agree that green space across a state route is really wrapped in and considered part of the community. It is an odd parcel, the fact that it is one parcel with Venetia Road running through it, but it, it does feel more like the letter of the law versus the spirit of the law. And three, I guess my biggest question is, and I've, you know, obviously worked with Mr. Sutter a bunch of my time on zoning, I've seen a lot of recommendations to approve, I've seen a lot of recommendations to deny. I've never seen a recommendation to table, and here we are almost an hour and a half later. It doesn't feel like we're heading in the direction of tabling, so I'm curious, A, why the recommendation to table? It almost feels as though we're doing this meeting before some issues are resolved, and B, is that, I'm just curious, is that something you guys are considering tabling? Because I get the impression that it's more so you're looking at either approval or denial tonight as opposed to table.
Well, I mean, what we have to do is give everybody here, not me, to speak, and that's what we've probably been doing for, since we have an audience here, we let the, you know, we wanted the applicant who's on, and we'll make the decision about whoever makes a recommendation here, once we hear out from everybody. But I mean, impressions one way or the other, we're just sitting here listening to everybody trying to address questions at this point.
Understood. May I ask why Township recommended the motion to table?
The idea was to give the consultant a chance to hear the comments coming from the planning commission and make any revisions if necessary.
Okay. And likely, if the motion table would pass, you'd just be looking at picking this up next month?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Could you sign in? Could you sign in?
Oh, sorry. I've never been on this side of the- Anyone else?
Sir.
Yeah, so here I have-
Come on over here first.
Adam Kenby, 106 T Berry Lane, so I'm in the cul-de-sac adjacent to the other cul-de-sac. So been following this development for a couple of years. Here I have 500 signatures of those opposed to this development. So all of us here are, you know, in the spirit of a denial, but, you know, as we kind of know from, in June, we adopted the new map that removed this parcel from the CR overlay. With the denial, which I think everybody here is looking for, this reverts back to low density, which I think most of us are fine with that type of development. Considering, I think we might be heading towards a table, if you guys are looking for a reason to not, to deny this, have at least two ordinances that you could take an off-ramp and deny it tonight if you want to. So I think I'll hold my comments on that because I don't want to reveal what they are to allow the developer to make those changes, but if you want the off-ramp, we can deny this tonight. And that's what most of the township wants, as you can see here. So.
And just so everybody's aware, this board is a recommending body to council, so council makes the ultimate decision whether they recommend yes, no, or indifferent, council will vote.
If they could deny this plan, then they would start from scratch.
No, it's still going to council.
It's going to council.
Our planning commission, we recommend-
All of ours, we're just a recommendation, whether they listen to us or not. But again, we're getting all this feedback, and we had a lot of good questions for them as well. So there's a lot of moving parts here that's yet to be determined, yet to be answered. So, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot here to digest, and that's, that's another reason why there could be a table motion coming forward. I don't know.
Okay. Well, I'll hold on to these ordinances. Like I said, the residents are clearly, there's been so much conversation around it, opposed to this type of development. I think in general, the board has been receptive to those comments, and we'll just give them the off-ramp whenever we get to that point.
And one more comment on that. So, you know, this board and council, it's not discretionary whether they like it or not. They're looking for compliance, that's all they can look to.
Yeah, and I'm offering up something that you guys can say, or not you guys, but potentially the board, we can look at it black and white, even a lawyer, like the very, the person in law school could look at it and say that it's a violation, doesn't mean it, and you would have your-
Well, in the process here, we send it out to outside engineers, we look at it internally with engineers. There's a lot of eyes on it, there's something that they miss, we're glad to look at it.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you.
Anyone else? Sir.
How are you? Joe Price, 109 Scenic Ridge Drive. Heard a lot of comments, some I wasn't, I wasn't even thinking about, but you said you listened to experts? Okay, fair enough, I agree. I've lived 20-plus years, okay, there? So that considers myself an expert to know how that creek runs and that stream runs, okay? I live it every day, I see it during the rain, snow, animals, everything. The people that live there are the experts, not the ones who go out there and dig a soil sample and take some photographs. It's the people that live there every day are the experts.
We identify which creek you're talking about on the east or on the south?
East, sorry, it could be east. I remember the cul-de-sac is right there, and I believe, sir, you said the distance between the end of the cul-de-sac to the property line is 100 feet?
It's with scaling on the plan.
So 30 yards, right? You say 30 yards? That's not enough. I can tell you, I can tell you when that thing floods, it goes beyond the banks of that, either direction. It, I've seen it, I've seen it more, I've seen it 10 times in the last 20 years. So I don't know, I mean, I get it, you know, he has his eyes, understand that, and then the hillside slopes up like this way, and I heard you say you're going to cut down all those trees? Shame on you, okay? Because that's, there's a lot of old trees there, I think they need to expand that beyond the creek. There's a lot of old trees there. So where they see dollars cutting down, I see different.
We're speaking about the creek that runs on the east side where the cul-de-sac is, the cul-de-sac to the top of the creek.
Yes, top, plant top. Trees, yeah, I'm sorry, right here. Like this thing right here, I mean, I'm sure the city's your reason you have to have it. I'm not an engineer, I don't know, but I mean, I work, my job, I don't have set hours. I drive through this township all hours of night, day, drive. I drive through this township all hours of night, day, drive, I mean, I'm up at three in the morning going to work, coming home at three in the morning going to work. So, as far as the traffic study, I agree with them. I also concerned about Venetia Road because there's other plans that are going on out there, not just in our township, other ones, and I see that, I've seen the increase over and over and over and over. That's just my concerns. Mostly a lot, it is the landscaping, because I mean, they're gonna, it's slopes like this, and they're gonna, I don't know what you guys are gonna, anyways, what they're exactly gonna do, but some of those trees, it's gonna cause erosion. And I don't care what they say and what study says, I've seen that creek flood, not flood, it's constantly running, unless we have a dry spell. But, you know, I think they need to increase the distance, and then get rid of that retention pond right there, and keep that big buffer of trees that's in there. It's, this is my, this is my, actually, I have to go to work here at nine-twenty, so I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Price.
Are there any, from the standpoint of studies of that area that they're talking about, are there any, is there any more information that we can ask for?
Absolutely, and we have, it's in our review letter.
No, no, any more than what we have not already received. Is there any additional information that we can ask for?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, additional information that we can ask for, they haven't provided, we've asked for a clarification to see if a joint permit would be needed for the floodway encroachment, which we believe that they are close.
To the floodway?
Yes, the floodway.
So they are in the flood plain, or is it not delineated?
That's not delineated. The north-south Peters is delineated.
So that's an A.
They are outside of that.
Okay.
So yeah, there's, that is to be determined. We've asked them for clarification from the Department of Environmental Protection.
And what happens then?
They would make a determination, it either is or it isn't. If it is, then it's additional studies, additional stormwater modeling that they would have to, to do, additional permitting that would have to be done.
And that's independent upon the determination by the DEP?
That would be a resolve of that. If they would say that, yes, this is jurisdictional, yes, they do need to get a JPA.
Okay. And we asked for that addition, we've asked for that additional information.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And just keep in mind, they still have to go through the Conservation District for all of their NPDS permits, so that will be scrutinized at that point as well.
And what is the timeline for that?
Depends on their submission.
Probably ninety days for an NPDS, and a year and a half for a joint.
The JPA could be upwards of ten to twelve months.
So the FEMA, there's not a FEMA-defined flood plain? Have we asked to evaluate the flood plain on that particular stream?
I believe that we have, and I believe that you have studied that, if I'm not mistaken?
You're talking about the one on the east side?
The one that's going east.
Not the floodway, but the flood plain.
Right, I know, we did, we did do a study on that small tributary, and it's generally...
It would be wise to do that, I would appreciate it, because then it's on paper and that's calculated to show what the limits of that are, so that if you do impact it, there's regulations, but at least it's some level of protection, I'm sure that we did our due diligence there.
Right, we have the information on that, we'll pass it along, if it hasn't been already.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm Jody Lesnikowski, I live at 111 Scenic Ridge Drive. That's this lot here. I also live on the stream, I have seen it flooded, I've seen it come up. It's bad. We have, fortunately, our land falls away towards the stream, obviously, so it's not coming up. If that retention pond ever fails, Joe Price's, lives next door to me, his entire shed will be underwater. So that is a concern for us. My other concern is the landscaping plan along here. That's, I'm gonna look at a fifty-foot hill, right here. Based on the elevation data that I was reading, and my daughter's a structural engineer, she's helping me to do so, we'll look at a fifty-foot hill, that they're probably gonna crown, vet her something on, so it's gonna be snake-infested. It's not gonna be attractive. Joe's right, you take down all those trees, we're gonna have a problem with water. There's an oak tree, we talked about this in the Frobe Farm Plan, where we were saving two trees there because it's these massive oak trees. There's several in that valley that I would like to have somebody go out and figure out how old they are, because I don't want to see them come down. You can get rid of all crab apples and all the other things that are there, that the deer like to eat. There is a population of deer that live there, about fifteen to twenty of them that I see every single day. There's a family of foxes. There's several geese. There's a bald eagle that frequently hunts in that field and frequents the pond. Has there been a census on what type of wildlife we will be disturbing when we do this because of the existing pond on the thing across the street?
Mr. Schlecker, do you run a PNDI?
Yes, sir.
Any hits on that?
I don't believe so, no.
So, like Joe said, I live there every day, I've seen these animals, I see them all the time. We know that we have bald eagles at Cannonsburg, where do you think they train their young? They fly them way farther than the lake in Cannonsburg. So these are some wetlands that are, I know for a fact, are being used by bald eagles. I've seen it. So that's a concern of mine. They're saying on there, so can we go to page four of the PDF by chance? Do we have that document? So I'm gonna zoom in over here to this first list of plan notes. And number one, I have questions on, the open space is intended to be passive recreation. Define that for me. So we're supposed to have, so for me, passive recreation would be go berry picking, because I make homemade jam from black raspberries that live along these streams here, and I have to cross Venetia Road to do it occasionally, and that's, you know, a task. You're gonna expect fifty-two houses who passively recreate over there to cross Venetia Road with their children, because that's the only open state space available to them. That's a concern of mine.
You're talking about the four acres of open space that are gonna remain as open space?
That are gonna remain.
That the undeveloped land across from Venetia Road is not gonna be...
Yeah. How can you dictate that as open space and passive recreation? You're asking them to cross a major arterial roadway for our area for passive recreation? That could mean hiking, that could mean going to gather pictures for the school project that every kid in this schoolroom has ever had to do, which was go out and collect photographs of wildflowers. We're getting rid of so much open space in the world, they're gonna have to go to places like this to find them, and they gotta cross Venetia Road to do that. So that's a concern of mine. Number five, there's no wooded slopes that are being removed that are on twenty-five percent slope or greater. How many woods meet that criteria? I guarantee you, they're removing most of the woods on this property. Because there's very few parcels that meet a twenty-five percent grade there, that those trees are gonna come off of. That means there's like some banks right next to the creek, that's a pretty significant steep slope there, but the rest of those trees are gonna be removed, and it's gonna be egregious.
So when we look at things like, like, you know, plan notes number five, and it says that no...
It's lip service.
I'm gonna read it. It says that no wooded slopes of twenty-five percent are great, slopes of twenty percent or greater are proposed to be disturbed. That's something that you guys go through the plans, obviously, that are submitted, and then determine that that, in accordance with what has been submitted for approval, does not exceed whatever that plan note requires, right?
Yes.
Okay. So that is something that's been looked at, and we're confident it's consistent and complies?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they're confident, because that's what they're planning, so they're giving us this feel-good.
I'm saying, these are guys, the Township engineers.
I know. But I'm interpreting it as a feel-good statement in here, so that it's a positive and it's not.
It's likely a code requirement for steep slopes, if I could interject.
Okay.
Yeah, so what I'm just saying is, is that these plan notes that are in here identify what's required and what's not required in accordance with the Township ordinance, so then the applicant sends in their application, and then it gets distributed out to all of the Township personnel and, again, the engineers, we send that, and then they check and make sure that everything, everyone that the zoning requirement is met before we get here. And that's what they're checking off their different boxes to say, are all of these Township, are these zoning requirements...
Okay, so that would be the same then for number eleven?
Zoning ordinance requirements.
That that's designed as appropriate, so that, what's appropriate is according to the Township then, is the same concept for number eleven?
Yeah, I would agree, ma'am.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And then I move down to number twenty-two. This development has been designed to proactively accommodate persons with disabilities, to allow all public resources to be accessible to all persons. How is open space across a major arterial lane accessible to persons with disabilities?
Well, that open space isn't ever developed at all. That's, I mean, I think that's, you know, none of the open space is developed, it's not for playground, it's just, it's...
It's passive recreation, you're disenfranchising certain persons.
I'm clear, we're not doing anything, we're a recommending body.
Well, right, I'm just making these points forward.
Okay, I understand, I'm just, I'm trying to let you talk, so you say they're not needed, okay? So what we're saying is that when you look through these things, that that open space land, that is space that's intended, that has no development to it at all, so it just sits undisturbed, and it's not intended to be providing anybody with anything specific, it's just land that nobody has touched, versus people's own lots, you know, where you can do whatever you want to with them, as long as you can buy the organs, you put swing sets on them, you can do whatever you want to.
So my next point I'd like to discuss is the three-car garages with the three parking spaces per driveway. We are entering a new era in housing. I'm an associate broker with a local real estate company here in Peters Township, and we are having a housing crisis, and it's not getting better, and it's not going to because we cannot build out of the situation we are in. We have fifty percent divorce rate in this country, most of these kids are going home to two houses, not just one. We have, we have younger generation who don't cohabitate with other people because they choose not to get married until they're in their thirties now. There is a housing crisis. We are not accommodating these plans anymore, this is a new problem that we have, that we are not accommodating these plans for multi-generational living. And we, anybody who lives on Scenic Ridge Drive knows of a family who their driveway and car was not big enough, and they parked on the street every day right next to a traffic calming device, nobody could get by, and we all had to drive around it. That's what's gonna continue to happen here, I don't care how many parking spaces you put in these plans. You need to make driveways big enough to accommodate more parking for multi-generational living, because that's where we're going, because people cannot afford it. My daughter's a structural engineer, her husband is studying to be an actuary, they make a significant amount of living, they can't afford to live in this plan that's being proposed.
So from a driveway standpoint, what would your suggestion be that the Township changed the ordinance?
You need to add more parking spaces per driveway.
Do you think it should, that the driveway should be made, what should the ordinance change be?
You should be able to accommodate the same number of cars as there are bedrooms in that house, at a very bare minimum, because...
Inside and out, including inside garden?
Well, like Rocco said in a previous meeting, Mr. Magrino said, he has a three-car garage, he, there's, you expect people are not gonna have stuff in their garages?
I'm not expecting anything, I'm just asking.
But there is code, this code of ordinance is that has required parking for this plan, and based upon the three and three, are we meeting that?
Yes.
Code ordinance?
We're meeting the code as it's stated.
The parking requirement. So what is the parking requirement per unit roughly, not including the guest parking?
It's, not including the guest parking, it's two per unit, and I wanna say it's either one or one and a half, one and a five. So no, one per, one and five for the auxiliary parking, but there's another parking requirement, I think it's one and a half per unit additionally, and I'm looking to John.
Yeah, I believe it's two plus, it's either two plus two, or two plus one and a half.
Which we round up.
You know, plus the one and a five guests.
So you're looking at four parking space per home, right? And you have three garage spaces and three, so would the HOA be amenable to ensure that there's parking available within those garages?
Not a code requirement, we're not gonna dictate what the people...
Well, I mean, the big issue would be, now, who's gonna enforce that?
Sometimes the HOA does.
Yeah.
I've seen it, the Department.
So what are the most number of, I'm sorry, you interrupted, what are the most number of bedrooms in these houses? Is it a four bedrooms, or are they...
Either, maybe some five and six, I'll have to check.
Bedroom houses, okay.
Yeah, so you get, there are certain cultures that I have helped them move into the Township. They are multi-generational, they're not from this country, they have moved here for a better life, but they bring the head of the household and all five brothers, and they all live in the same house.
So your suggestion would be that the Township have parking requirements that are...
For the lot itself.
That are dictated based upon the number of bedrooms in each home. So if a home has six bedrooms, it has to have so many ratioed parking spaces to it, that's your suggestion?
Right, because like I said, this family that lives on Scenic Ridge, they had, you know, so many kids, and there wasn't enough parking for their, for their household, so they left a car on the street every single day until that kid moved out.
And does the Township have ordinance requirements for that, that each home is only allowed so many cars? Or is it just a general, you're only allowed however many will fit, and if you park on the road all the time?
We don't have a restriction on that.
You know, anything like that?
Well, we do have restrictions on parking on streets.
Right. And I know some streets, there's no overnight parking, some streets, there's no parking period.
Okay, so then that's, that's an enforcement issue then? That's an enforcement issue.
Well, I appreciate your analysis, that's a hypothesis, we're not gonna be able to enact any code ordinances here tonight relative to number of bedrooms. So we're looking at the three point five or four, depending on what is required under this current code for this plan.
Right.
And it appears that we're satisfied that that meets that requirement.
As we sit here today.
As we sit here right now.
Yeah, and my last point is that I would ask, again, respectfully, that we revisit the forty percent calculation. I live, you saw where I live, I'm closer to Venetia Road, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, I'm going north, because there's nothing to go, there's no place to go that way. If I'm going to Heiser's Market, if I'm going to the school, if I'm going to work, if I'm going anywhere, there's no place to go going on Venetia Road, except to the country in either direction. Or unless you want to go up to Route Fifty-One and you want to go shopping up there, but nobody goes there anymore because it's not safe anymore.
Well, I can see that, because I live down on the ground as well, and I go Venetia if I'm gonna go to, like, if I'm gonna go to Ace Hardware, if I live, you know, I go down Venetia to do that, to go down to that end.
I go up to the northern to go out, to go to Ace Hardware, and then cut across.
Right.
It's just the way the traffic is flowing there, because people are absolutely right, Wildbrier is going to get slammed with traffic.
I'm just...
Slammed.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I am Jody's daughter, Jorin. I do not live in the Township currently, but I do frequent 111 Scenic Ridge Drive. My husband and I, as she said, I'm a structural engineer, I've worked for Infinity Custom Homes now. I'd seen the original proposal for this plan when it came through last summer, and I do think this is a marked improvement from that, so I do want to commend the engineers that have gone over it, because I know that dealing with that hillside is probably a fun time, so fitting that many lots on there, as large as they are right now, probably was something that was difficult to do. So, I do want to go to page sixteen, which has the street with the slope on it, I think it's incorrectly marked for the centerline of the street.
I don't know where you're...
Yep, so it should say centerline Woodbrier, not centerline, which is standing right now. It should say Woodbrier there, since the chart says Woodbrier.
That showed the intersection with another road. I can check if there's a typo, but...
So I'm reading that as the slope down to the grading where the pond would be, for the retention pond that's adjoining the east boundary of the property.
Now, that's the profile of the centerline of the road, and the...
Right, so if I go to the bottom of the chart, it says Woodbrier.
Okay.
Yeah, Woodbrier Drive, Forty-two foot rightward profile.
Yes.
But then the centerline does not say that that is Woodbrier profile.
You're talking about label right in the middle of the screen right now?
Yeah.
Yes, because that...
I was confused on that, like, where are we cutting to the section there? Like, what slope are we, what grading are we showing with this?
Again, that's the centerline, we're showing the grading in profile of the centerline of Woodbrier Drive. I believe the left side would be coming from our other plan road, and the right side would be where it ties into existing Woodbrier.
Because if I'm looking at the topography lines, that the lines with...
Woodbrier, Wildbrier.
Yeah, if I'm looking at the, if the topography line, the lines would be upper half of the neighborhood with the grading line, so I was kind of confused where this one was cut, and if that slope is actually eleven percent on that hillside, where do you have the plan, like, on that landscaping plan proposed?
No, this is, this is the centerline of the road width, so...
Can we go back to plan view so he can show me where the cut line is? No, no, that's...
The profile appears to be from Luca Court up to Wildbrier.
So, perfect, that's good, so that profile depicts, from the left side of the profile begins at this intersection, and it runs along the centerline of the road, and it terminates in this vicinity here. And then the line that you questioned, the Carmen Way centerline?
Sure.
That's showing where this roadway intersects, because there's some green requirements as you transition through intersections.
Thank you for that. I was, I was looking at it, I'm like, I'm not sure if I'm reading this right, so thank you for that. So then that slope that you're seeing, that eleven percent grading, is that to Venetia So then that slope that you're seeing in that 11% grading, is that to Venetia Road?
No, that is in this area here. And you kind of see the contours are a little bit closer together.
Pretty steep slope. So those will all be transition lots, then half walkout and half patio. So the driveway side will be on the high side of the lot.
Exactly. Yes.
And it creates some unusual site conditions. So will there be retaining walls between those plans in some areas where they're having a 10-foot drop-off between those sites? I know they're about, depending on which lot you're looking at, if you do the building setback lines, you can fit between a 60-foot house and a 95-foot house on those lots, which is a large house with only seven and a half foot setbacks if you were to build to the maximum extent of the lot. So those would create for some unusual grading conditions, I would say, in the use of retaining walls in some of those situations.
Retaining walls are not anticipated. And basically, the transition from the first floor to the basement will be approximately 10 feet. And it'll kind of step down to the basement of, say, the given lot 113 would be pretty close to the same elevation as the first floor elevation for 112. And that would transition, they would kind of step down as you go.
I know the grading on that plan in that area right now is already pretty steep on that hillside. So again, kudos because it does have a more gradual grade how it is. But those lots, they have a pretty steep grade on some of them between the one side and the other side. If you build to those maximum extents, I don't see how you're not going to have at least some retaining wall structures if you build the plan out to the max of those lot widths. I just don't see how it's feasible.
Yeah, and I'm trying to think what our typical lot width is, maybe 105 feet. The houses are not going to be 90.
Well, I measured the building setback line. So the one that's at the top there that's about .4 acres, it's one of the widest lots, is about 95 feet maximum building lot width, which would fit the middle floor plan based on the elevations.
Are you asking about if there's retaining walls?
Yeah, I mean, if they build to the max building lines, you're going to be close to.
Retaining walls would be allowed. There is a maximum height on those unless there's a variance.
And then like there's going to be fence that you have to put on depending on the height of those. Like, what's the proposed grading per lots, I guess is what I'm asking. When you're building a house that big on these lots, you're going to look at, you're going to have individual topography that's going to be changing them drastically when you're putting a house to that max lot width. And then only 15 feet between the houses with those conditions on some of those lots. I know the top half on the left side, those are fairly flat, those aren't going to be a problem, but.
It becomes difficult. It becomes a very detailed exercise, which is probably not being thought through extraordinarily well. It's just like, or you can tell us, or that is a final plan.
Yeah, that is one of my concerns with some of these lots is that with that seven foot, seven and a half feet in the max build, that we're going to have some site conditions that are very undesirable or end up kind of valley-like or very weird site conditions so that it's still sloping away from the house and the soil. I know we have some undesirable site conditions where I work in which we end up putting retaining walls that we really don't like doing, but we don't get to develop the land. We just get to lease it back and build our houses on it. So it's not something we get to usually decide, but it does end up being more often than not something that our residents are not happy with.
Understood. And there is a maximum height on retaining walls. Correct?
Yep.
Thank you. Any more?
No, that's all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any more audience comments?
Yeah, I just had one more.
Manup.
I wanted to mention, did anybody do a market study? I mean, do we really need another plan of million-dollar-plus homes? Is there a market for that? The concern being that if you've got all these, if someone can afford that much house, are they really going to want to be right on top of their neighbor? Where this is leading is what if you can't sell these places? Then all of a sudden, we revert to something different where we don't have concrete driveways. We go with paved driveways and then we switch deciding because we have to get the cost down because there's no market for these places. So is there some sort of market analysis that says that there's a demand for million-dollar-plus homes on .3 acres in Peters Township?
That's not our challenger charge here. We, that's up to the market itself.
So we can't dictate, you know, from again, from a legal standpoint, they can't.
No, I'm not dictating. I'm asking, has a market analysis been done that this is a feasible plan in terms of being able to sell these places?
Oh, I thought you said, so no, we can't require that.
No, no.
Question to the developer. I, yeah, I don't know.
Right, I mean, you end up with a plan that's not sellable because no one can afford these houses or anybody wants them because that much house keeps them right on top of your neighbor. Why would I, why would I want to buy there? Why would I want to build that?
That would be a developer's risk.
And what we can say is that the plan that's approved is the plan that, you know, the plan that gets all the way to final approval, gets approved in the end, will have the requirements out for what they are and are not allowed to do, right?
So you're not allowed to suddenly switch in the middle because you can't sell the lots that now you're going to change from.
Well, only with the things that we can dictate, right? So only with respect to the things that we can dictate. So everything that's approved in final approval, those things that are written in stone have to stay in stone unless, and then that they can't build it to come back. But we can't dictate, like we said before, color and size and things like that.
No, I just meant the consideration for approving the plan, that this is a possible risk, if this plan is not going to be able to go forward the way that you think it's going to go.
And that's where it's not. If the developer puts forth a plan that meets all of our, all of the township and zoning requirements, if they put forth that plan, then it's not a consideration. We're, as a, it's, we're not allowed to say that I don't think you're going to be able to sell this. And they don't have to prove to us that they would be able to sell. That's not something that's within our jurisdictional allowance. We don't have the authority to act, to require proof that they can sell these lots. That's not something we're required or allowed to ask.
Well, maybe that's a future consideration for these plans. Is it really feasible to even?
But that's what I mean. As far as where the law stands, that's not something that we can require. Just like, just like when I, you know, when Michaels went in, we can't, we can't assess and say, do we think a Michaels will be, you know, will be successful here or not? We don't have the right to ask that question. That's, and that's not, that's not a township, that's a Pennsylvania law. You know, there's only so many things we're allowed to require. And those aren't things that set forth an ordinance.
Very good. Thank you. Any other town, any other audience comments?
Could you just follow, just for those of us that don't know what the procedure is, what the next step would be and where this whole thing's going?
Sure. So anticipating a motion here from this commission tonight, whatever our recommendation may be, then we'll go on to council for their hearing of this preliminary plan. There will be, correct me if I'm wrong, the final plan submission where we come back to this commission and then on to council again. So they're essentially, I want to boil it down to simplicity, but there's four stops, this being the first.
Sorry, are the other three?
Sir, Manup, can you please?
And please sign it.
Justin Morris, 107 Autumn Way. Are the next three steps also open to public?
Yes.
Okay. That was it.
And the way for you to know that is that all of the meetings' agendas are posted online. So you, you can see the planning commission's agenda ahead of time and see whether this plan's on. If in fact, there's a recommendation, either way, it ends up at council, those agendas are all posted, so.
People are also allowed to speak at those?
Absolutely.
Will there be mailings to the community?
No, the, the, on the, the way this is set up is that the initial submit of the plan, and because this plan has sat for so long, we went out and redid all of those mailings. But at this point going forward, there's a, there's a regular set of meetings that are coming up. So if, if the planning commission can take action on this one way or the other tonight, the other thing they can do is table it and meet again to discuss all the things that have been discussed here and the developer would have an opportunity to address those concerns. That will occur within the next, I would assume, the next 30 days, and then it will go on to council, so. But there aren't mailings for every one of those steps. At this point, you simply need to watch the, and you can always call into the building. We always take calls on, on things like this.
Okay, so it was mentioned that there.
I'm sorry, sir, can you state your name?
My name is Dave Hutcherson. I live on 112 Autumn Way.
Yes, sir.
So it was mentioned that there's going to be sidewalks in this new development. And there are no sidewalks in San Woods. And there are a lot of, I don't know if anybody's done this type of study, but there are a number of young children in that neighborhood. And because there's no sidewalks, when they bike, when they ride their scooters, and people my age, I walk those streets all the time, and I see a lot of people on those streets walking. These people are all going to be impacted by that traffic. They're not going to be able to walk those streets, you know, during busy times of the day. And there's a lot of risk involved. I don't know if anybody considers that, but I want you to consider that. The street I live on, you know, there's several young children, and now they're at age, they're on bikes, they're cruising the neighborhood. And so they're going to be at risk, you know? This is just inevitable, you know, if you're going to increase the traffic. Can you zoom down to the bottom of that screen there? I'm curious about the green space on the eastern part of this. I guess that'd be the eastern part.
That's the western.
Or the western part. There's no trees that I can see. Is there any evergreen, anything that's going to be planted there? Because, you know, our homes on Autumn Way, our backyards are facing those folks' backyards. And I don't see any vegetation being planted there. Can you tell me if that's going to happen?
It's just like what you might want to explain. I think it's just, that looks like just grasses or?
Well, the solid green hatching is just depicted as the 20-foot buffer setback in, you know, which is contained in the, the open space. And the, the design there is for the existing vegetation to remain. I believe there are mature trees along there. I'm not sure exactly what trees fall on, you know, the adjoining property, which trees fall on this one, but anything within 25 feet of that boundary is going to be, is going to remain undisturbed.
So anything within 25 feet of the boundary stays and it's, it's after you hit that 25 feet is where you guys start.
The boundary is green or is it dark green? Is that the boundary?
The boundary is the bottom of the dark green, so the thickness of that solid green is 25 feet.
That's grass right now.
No, what he said was that that's where.
I'm just saying, that is grass right now.
Okay.
So there's very few trees where my home is located and my immediate neighbors, two neighbors. There's not, I mean, there's a few trees, but, you know. And I'm curious about one more thing. There is a property, I believe it's this property or maybe this property, there's a spring located in this property. And I don't know exactly how far the hill is. I'd like to see a topographical, topographical map of that area that would show that. The hill rises this direction as well as back, and I don't see that.
It's on a doodle map.
Do you think it's at like 146, 147, sir?
Yeah.
You think it's like 146, 147?
We did, just to address that, there was a wetland delineation received by the township.
All right, so what happens with this? You can see that the home is placed right on top of that natural, that flooded stream. So what? What's provisions? You know, is there an environmental impact study? What has been done regarding that?
Yeah, the, we did receive, and it's not in our packet, but I believe the township received a wetland identification delineation report in February 2023 that identifies the natural resources that are on-site, including streams, wetlands, and other environmental resources, meeting the criteria set forth by the state. So my understanding is that whatever element is there, whether it be spring or not, it's not depicted on your plan. And I'm assuming we reviewed it and we've agreed that that element is not a environmental resource. Is that correct?
Correct.
It feeds a pond right down through the cliff. And you have the property, it feeds.
Sir, you're going to have to come up and.
Yep, I just want to.
You're going to have to come up. Please come up to the, thank you. I'm done.
Thank you.
If you look, I have a walk. Neil Mickett, 109 Autumn Way.
Thank you, Mr. Mickett.
This spring, which has never dried. This house, which is mine for 28 years, it's never dried. I personally took a calf out of this field in two feet of month in July. I wouldn't build a house right there. I'm also concerned about this green space and what it's going to look like when this development is finished. Because again, they took the time to put trees in between the backyards in the development. They should take the time to put a pizza zone in between the backyards into the neighborhood that you're tying into. And I was going to save this for whether or not the cul-de-sac actually got tied into. But when you tie into that cul-de-sac, you affect the neighborhood that when we bought into, that phase was supposed to be built to the same criteria as our neighborhood, which is not what's being built. The lots are small, the cars don't fit in the driveway, we all know that. We can dance around that all day long. They're not going to fit. I think we need to think about protecting the rights of the people that have lived all around this new development for 28 years or more and invested their hard-earned money into a township that we thought was going to protect our investments. And I am up here to ask you guys to protect our investments. Just like when I built my building on Venetia Road, I had to do things to protect the look of this building right here. I had to have hard sides all the way, all three sides had to be hard surfaces because it's a commercial building. And I am going to get a house in my backyard that quite possibly, I have no idea what the siding is going to look like or the back porch or anything, but I had to spend a premium. When you go by there, what I planned was the minimum requirement for the township for shrubbery. I believe we need some buffer done. And I want to know who's going to control what it looks like after the developer's gone and the HOA takes over. I'm also concerned about what is going to happen to the property here? Is it just going to become a wild land with brush and trees? Or is it going to be taken care of? And this poor guy, he's going to have to get real coyotes because he's going to have geese all over New York. But I think these things need to be taken into consideration, not because I don't want you guys to develop. I want you to develop something that is going to bring some value to me as well. That's why I chose to live in Peters Township, because they protect the people that live here. I love you guys, I'm a developer myself. This is what I do. I'm a contractor. And when I go build a building somewhere, I have to build it just like that one right there to enhance the area it's around. And I'm asking you to go back, study these drawings. If you could sell it to a farmer, I'll love you forever. But I don't think he can. Although, I've been asking Mr. Manley for years to give me first dibs, if that's appropriate.
Same.
And I can't get him to answer the phone, and I like the guy. I saved his cow out of that.
He put up a fence again and tree fell off.
That's up from tree fell off. For years. It's okay. I wanted to develop this township, but I want to protect the people that live here. I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. I do appreciate every one of you guys. Your building's beautiful.
Any other audience comments? Hearing none, commissioner comments or staff comments? Ready for a motion? If you have one?
So based upon all the comments today, and I don't see any reason to go against staff recommendation. Staff recommendation was that the Venetia Road LLC application plan be tabled at this time while the, while the issues were identified and the staff recommendation letter were addressed. I also think that there's been enough discussed here today to give both the developer and staff time to go back through and kind of look at things specifically. For me at least, the issue with the homeowner that's across on the San Pedro sewer issues across on Venetia Road. And then I just asked, take a second look at that traffic study and give everybody some time to go back and look at this again before we end up back at, we get back, we end up before council. So I make the recommendation that we table the plan so that they can take a look at this a second time.
I would definitely second that. I need a little time to digest everything that's gone here tonight. I have more questions. I'm going to get back to the code book myself and look at some things. I second that motion.
Give a motion, we have a second. I note that in staff's recommendation, it was subject to the applicant requesting extension of time, location to a specific date. Does that still hold true? Do we have to consider that?
No, we're not requesting an extension of time.
Is there a number of days that must be heard from today? Or hasn't that clock started yet?
I'm looking through the solisters here. Typically, it's 90 days from the day that we receive it.
Not from when we, not from when we hear it, but when you receive it.
From either first meeting after we receive it, which would be today, or 30 days, whichever comes. comes first. Or this application, as noted earlier, had been submitted previously, although numerous revisions have been made. So there's a question as to when that start date is.
Are you, are you waving that, counsel?
No, you're not. No, you're not.
So you would like a?
Well, I mean, the, the motion to table, you've made, we haven't.
I understand that.
You know, our, the plan was submitted. I'm trying to get it here.
Can you please come up to the microphone?
Yeah, I apologize. I'm Brian Devine. I'm from Delphi, Kavanaugh Street, on behalf of the applicant. The, come on over here. The plan was submitted on 9/26/23. That's the plan that's before you.
Were there revisions to the plan since that?
We did receive another plan submission on February.
February 2024.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't believe they were, it was a full revised plan. There were, there were responses, but our, our position is that's the date that this was submitted.
Is that when it went from 83 units to 52?
No, at that point it was 52.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so we're, we're, we're not asking for an extension at all. I mean, obviously, the motion to table.
Are you asking for a decision tonight? Is that what you're asking for?
Alternatively, the board doesn't have, they haven't voted on this motion. They can vote to approve this, recommend it or not recommend it, and just let it go to council. It's your choice.
Well, I mean, I.
Yeah, because I'll withdraw the motion. If I withdraw the motion to table, if we are out of time to take it.
Well, there's a question on that.
I don't, I don't want to deem it.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't want to get into the, the legal issues. I don't.
Yeah, my only question is if there's, if there's a deemed approval if we just table, or I mean, you know what I mean?
Right, I understand. They, they've raised that issue before, and that's the question. And they're, they're here in fairness to the applicant and good faith that they're moving forward with this process. But the process that we've implemented, the, the planning commission saw at the last meeting was to seek written extensions if they don't want you to take action. There is a question, I haven't looked at the February plan as to whether that voided the September plan and started a new clock. I, I don't know because again, I haven't looked at the plan, so I'm not in a position to say whether that, you know, is possible or not. But if they're not inclined to give the extension, I'd have the board make a recommendation up or down.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, just to be clear, Dr. Hyde, I think, our position is that there was a deemed approval on January 11th.
Because it wasn't, because it wasn't on the agenda?
Yeah, they, they've raised that to.
And we've raised it. I'm trying to be candid. We came here in good faith.
And they have, and they, the applicant has continued to move forward in good faith.
Absolutely.
And you know councils well as I, regardless of the recommendation to council, if issues are addressed before it gets to council, it's the same difference.
But can I ask the question? Is, is it the intention of the developer not to proceed with this through the normal process we have here, but rather to ask for a decision tonight? Is that what you're saying?
Well, no, I've just, I've heard someone tell me a table, a motion to table is an extreme rarity. I mean, we, I mean, we, we, our, our plan was submitted. I mean, I, we're here in good faith. I mean, I think most people will agree, there's been a tremendous amount of complaints.
And are you looking for us to move forward with, with making the corrections to the, to the plan and it coming back to the planning commission? Or are you saying you need a decision tonight because you think there's a deemed approval?
Well.
I, I mean, that's a question.
Well, that's, that's, it's a complicated legal question, right? I believe the plan satisfies the ordinance, right? It's before this commission to decide yes or no, or to table it upon, you know, a motion, not, not made by us. I'm not asking for an extension of any sort. If there's going to be an extension, well, the extension's wrong, if it's going to be tabled, it's because the commission decided to table it.
And so if it is tabled, what, what is the intention of the developer with regard to this plan? Is it to proceed to court?
No, we, look, from what I've heard, most of these things are, can be worked out.
I would agree with you.
So, but what I can't do is grant an extension.
Okay, so that's my question. So you won't, I know you haven't asked for an extension and you won't agree to an extension. That's such your position, you won't. So that I will, and since we don't have a, we don't have a strong belief system about whether we are with a timing as we sit here right now, that I'm going to move to withdraw my motion to table. Okay? And then I, just based upon the number of questions and staff's recommendations before, that there are some things, based upon staff, that kind of wanted some more time to look at, and then the additional questions that have come up today that I think are worth a second look to try and clean things up before you get to council. And since, but if we can't get an extension, that's, that's your right, then I am going to make a recommendation to recommend denial of the plan based upon where it sits here today, where it sits as submitted today. That'll be my recommendation. That'll be my motion.
And I would second that motion because that's, that's exactly how I was going to follow if you did answer this. So I'm rescinding my, my motion, I seconded the earlier motion and seconded this, this revised motion, I'd deny, deny.
We have a motion for denial, recommendation of denial on the table and it's a motion and seconded. Do we vote? All in favor?
Denied, yes.
Denied. So this will now not come back to planning. This will now go directly to council. In between now and then, the applicant still has the ability to address the concerns that were raised here tonight with staff before it reaches council. The, the idea was really, and the why the staff recommended tabling is to make sure before it gets to council that there are no open questions, and it really benefits the applicant to that extent. But it's their choice as to whether they want that or not. And there, there are some issues with the timelines on this, and I understand council's position. And again, for, for our purposes, within this process, the applicant has agreed to continue with this process, so whatever council does with it, council will do with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the, so the planning commission just recommended that the council deny the plan, preliminary plan in its current form. So this will then go on to, preliminary plan will move on to council, I believe at its next meeting?
No.
No? But is the next, when will this be heard?
I don't know when it'll be on the council agenda. That's something we'll have to figure out.
So, so what council will do is look at the deficiencies planning found and see if those have been corrected by the time it reaches them. And so if it has, they can vote up or down as well. But that's what they're, they're looking for compliance. Remember, this is not a discretionary review, as to whether they like it or not. They're looking for compliance with the ordinance. You heard a number of open issues tonight, and staff will continue to work with the applicant to get some of the answers that not only the board and planning commission wants, but the citizens want as well, for some traffic accounts and things like that. So that will now come back up before council, rather than come back here, flush that all back out and then the recommendation.
And just so everyone knows, the reason we're talking about timing, the reason we're talking about timing is these plans have, again, pursuant to the ordinance, pursuant to Pennsylvania law, there are timelines that have to be met, and there are times that you're, that you have to consider and then, and when it moves on, so that any township couldn't just table something 100 times for any developer because that wouldn't be first. So there are timelines. So that's where there's a bit of.
And the applicant controls that, that extension. We don't.
Right, so.
Mr. Smith, a clarifying question.
Yes, sir.
So let's say if it does go to, it goes to the board, they find deficiencies in it, legal deficiencies will be pointed to the ordinances and they deny it. At that point, does this default back to low density? I understand that the township's position would be as of what was done in the first June with the map that was adopted, it removed the CR overlay from this parcel, but there was a plan.
No, I get it. So your short answer is it could. To understand that if there's a denial, not just with this applicant, but all applicants, they typically would appeal that and we'd end up in court, and the court would decide a number of issues as to whether we were correct, whether there was timing issues, all those things.